Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Please stand for the pledge and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pastor Rick Ponzo of Calvary Chapel? Hi.
Mayor, Council, staff, and everyone else in attendance, thank you for this opportunity to start with an invocation. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this time where we gathered together for the purpose of seeking a good plan for this town. Lord, I pray that you would give wisdom to those that are making decisions, that they would be impartial, that they would seek clearly what would be best for the town, and that they would accordingly follow after whatever would be best. Lord, I pray that you would give them discernment, understanding, and clarity in all that they do, whether it's fiscal or whether it's security issues that they're going to discuss. Lord, give them the best plan. We pray that you would be present here for this meeting tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. Roll call, please. Mayor Dickey?
Here.
Vice Mayor LaCron. Councilmember Sharnow?
Present.
Councilmember Tolles?
Here.
Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Magazine?
Here.
Councilmember Spelitch?
Here.
Thank you. First, I want to mention that item 8D about the hillside protections is not going to be heard tonight. Thank you. Reports by Mayor, Councilmembers, and Town Manager. Does any -- do any of the councilmembers have anything to report? Mike?
Real quickly, and I know Councilman Spelitch is on the phone, but he and I were part of a ribbon-cutting ceremony last Friday night hosted by Pro Skill, and it was pretty unique. It was out on Swarro Lake on the Dolly Steamboat, so got to enjoy beautiful views out at the lake and another ribbon-cutting by the chamber. So that was fun.
And you went to GPEC, right? To the big to-do?
Did go to the annual banquet held by Greater Phoenix Economic Council, held down at the Van Buren, and was quite the celebration, and about 1,000 people were there from all over the valley, and businesses and cities and towns and other folks were there. So it was a grand celebration and good networking time. And our economic development guy, James Smith, was there working the crowd, and I think he recruited about 14 businesses to come to town.
Oh, wow.
And Dana Sarr was there from the Community College District, and he's an ambassador for GPEC as well. So, yeah, it was a good time.
Thank you. We appreciate you going. Any other council? Grady, you have a couple things, right?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, as you recall, September 23rd, we had a very unusual storm event. The town of Fountain Hills, over less than a 24-hour period, received about four inches of rain. In fact, we had three major storms that moved through on September 23rd, causing quite a bit of rainfall that hit the town and drainage issues that we had. But we were fortunate. A lot of the improvements that we had put into the park over at Golden Eagle, following the storm that we had in October of last year, really did a good job of holding all the sediment, and we really were fortunate that we didn't have a repeat of what happened a year ago. Just to let you know, we have spent approximately $55,000 on the cleanup. We have a little bit more left to do, and we had very little damage throughout the town. Normally, on storm events like that, you might have some issues. We did have a street failure, so Quanis Road, we had that fail, and that was approximately $60,000. We just got that up and running. So $55,000 for the cleanup and $60,000 for the repair and restoration of Quanis. We also had about 32 hours of overtime as well, and we have some minor expense in cleaning up the ballfields in the Golden Eagle Park. So, good news is, I think, again, the staff did some really good work trying to re-channelize the channels that come into Golden Eagle Park that the washes feed into, so we didn't get the sediment that blew into the fields like we did in October. But that's still quite a bit of mess, and we are in the process of trying to finalize an engineering study. In fact, talk about timing. We had just met with the firm of Fuller and Associates the week before to talk about some of their proposed plans. They also had a good fortune to see what happened at the storm, so they are going to incorporate those into -- or incorporate their observations into some of the recommendations that come out of that, and that should be coming forth probably in the next six weeks or so. Correct, Justin? The other item I wanted to mention, too, is we were at a joint meeting with the Fort McDowell Yafpi Nation and our council. I believe it was last week, or was it the week before? Week before. It just -- it seems to blur. But as you recall, a number of their tribal leaders mentioned that they had some concerns about some of the smaller aviation, air traffic that's flying over both the tribal community and our community. We have had some good luck working with our lobbyists. Jack Lunsford reached out to Scottsdale Air Park, and we're going to be getting a meeting real shortly with them to discuss the flight patterns that are flying out of that airport and see if we can get them to help us with that. So that's some good news on that. Scottsdale seems very willing to try to help coordinate that a little bit better. That's all I have.
Thank you. We also met with the sanitary district and had a joint meeting here, and the agendas for both of those meetings and any information will be online if you want to look at what we talked about. I was able to have an interview with the MAGazine, which is the newsletter from MAG, the Maricopa Association of Governments, and they do a profile story on the different regional councilmembers. So it was great. I got to talk about Fountain Hills, and that should be in November, I think. That's it? Okay, thanks. Next, we have a proclamation, which is Arizona Cities and Towns Week, which is the 20th to the 26th of October. Appropriately, we have our league president here. Let me read this. Whereas the citizens of the town of Fountain Hills rely on the town to experience a high quality of life in our community, and whereas cities and towns in Arizona work 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to deliver vital city and town services such as fire, police, and emergency medical response to ensure safe communities, and whereas cities and towns in Arizona also provide services and programs that enhance the quality of life for residents such as parks, utilities, street maintenance, sanitation, and recycling services, libraries, community centers, and recreational programs, and whereas it's important for the town of Fountain Hills to continue to provide the excellent delivery of services and programs that our citizens have come to expect in our community, and whereas it's one of the responsibilities of town officials to ensure open and accessible government through frequent communication with citizens using various avenues and means, and whereas through participation and cooperation, citizens, community leaders, local businesses, and municipal staff can work together to ensure that services provided by the town can remain exceptional elements of the quality of life of our community. Therefore, I, Jenny Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, hereby proclaim the town of Fountain Hills joins with the League of Arizona Cities and Towns and fellow municipalities across the state in declaring October 20th through the 26th, 2019, Arizona Cities and Towns Week. Nobody to -- that came for this event, but we have this, and I'm happy to share it, and I'm so glad that you were here for that.
Mayor, if you don't mind, I'll take that proclamation, and I'll make sure it's hung in the lobby of the town hall here.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I'll just save that over here. Next, we have another proclamation, very important, which is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. I don't know if you noticed, we had a purple -- lit a purple ribbon on the entrance, and then we have gels making a nice purple glow on the rotunda. I became familiar with the Coalition to End Sexual and Domestic Violence through my late friend Jenny Gurrell that I've known -- knew for so many years, who's completely devoted to this effort, and so I'm going to read this in her honor and for all those whose lives are affected by domestic violence. Whereas homes should be a place of warmth, unconditional love, tranquility, and security, and for most of us, home and family can indeed be counted among our greatest blessings, and whereas tragically for many Americans, these are blessings that are tarnished by violence and fear, and whereas women, men, young children, and the elderly are all counted among the victims of domestic violence, and physical injury and deaths occur and emotional scars are often permanent, and whereas law enforcement officials, shelters, hotline services, health care providers, and clergy and concerned citizens are helping in the effort to end domestic violence, and whereas we recognize the compassion and dedication of these volunteers and professionals applaud their efforts and increase public understanding of this important problem, and whereas the town council approved Resolution 2013-44 on August 15th, 2013, expressing support for the Start by Believing campaign through the End Violence Against Women International Organization. Now, therefore, I, Jenny Dickey, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Fountain Hills, and urge all citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of domestic violence and supporting community efforts in working toward its end. And thank you for wearing your ribbons, and we really appreciate this recognition. And I'll keep this aside also. We have another -- thank you. We have another proclamation, which is Red Ribbon Week, and we do have folks here to accept that, and I was going to ask Councilman Sharnow to please do the honors.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before we start on reading the proclamation, it's about an entire week that's coming up, and I just wanted to mention I'm a board member for the Fountain Hills Coalition, and the Coalition, I know Sheriff's Office, school officials, DEA, and probably some other folks I'm forgetting are coordinating a Red Ribbon Day at our middle school, and that's going to be on October 30th. So I'm sure if any citizens would want to participate in that or witness it, it's pretty much a day-long activity over at the middle school, and traditionally, they have flown in helicopters and attack dogs and all kinds of police dogs and all kinds of stuff, so it's a really good program. But this proclamation was requested by the East Valley Young Marines. So here we go. Whereas alcohol and drug abuse in this nation have reached epidemic stages, invisible unified prevention education efforts by community members must be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs, and whereas the East Valley Young Marines, the local unit of the United States Young Marines, is a youth education and service program for boys and girls that focuses on promoting the mental, moral, and physical development of its members, including character building, leadership, and encouraging a healthy, drug-free lifestyle, and whereas the Young Marines is the official youth program of the United States Marine Corps and is the focal point for the U.S. Marine youth drug demand reduction efforts and is open to youth ages eight through high school completion who are in good standing in their school, and whereas National Red Ribbon Campaign and East Valley Marine Program offer citizens the opportunity to demonstrate their commitment to drug-free lifestyles, no use of illegal drugs, no illegal drugs, and whereas the National Red Ribbon Campaign will continue celebrated in every community in America during Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd through the 31st of 2019, and whereas invite all business, government, parents, law enforcement, the media, medical institutions, religious institutions, schools, senior citizens, service organizations, and youth will demonstrate their commitment to healthy, drug-free lifestyles by wearing and displaying red ribbons during this week-long campaign, and whereas the town of Fountain Hills further commits its resources to ensure the success of the Red Ribbon Campaign, whereas October 23rd through the 31st has been designated National Red Ribbon Week, which encourages Americans to wear a red ribbon to show their support for a drug-free environment. Now, therefore, on behalf of the town of Fountain Hills, we do hereby proclaim October 23rd through the 31st as Red Ribbon Week, and encourage its citizens to participate in drug prevention education activities, not only during Red Ribbon Week but all year long, making a visible statement that we are strongly committed to a drug-free Fountain Hills dated this 15th day of October 2019. So there's some folks in attendance here from the East Valley Marines? Or?
I guess not.
All right. Well, we'll get this proclamation to them, so.
Thank you. And if they come, if they're late, then we can give it to them at that time. Thank you, Mike, very much. Next, we have recognition of outgoing commissioners. I'm going to start with Christopher Jones. He was on planning and zoning from October 27th through September 2019. He's not here tonight, but we certainly appreciate his service, and we'll keep that and give it to him next time we see him. We also, for SPAC, Strategic Planning Advisory Commission, a certificate of appreciation for Dana Sarr, who was serving from August 2013 through June of 2019. So same thing, Dana's not here. We'll make sure that we get that to him and thank him for his service. For Sister Cities, we have Dr. Patrick Sweeney, our former superintendent. He served from June 2016 through June 2019, and he's not here. But thank goodness, we have one of our commissioners here, from Sister Cities, Jackie Miles, a certificate of appreciation for your service on the Sister Cities Advisory Commission, June 26th through June 2019, and I'd like to come down and give it to you if that would be okay. Thank you. (applause) Now, next, we have our scheduled public appearance by our Maricopa County Library Manager, Marin Hunt. Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
Mayor Dickey, Town Council, thank you for the opportunity to talk about the library. I hope you're ready for a long talk, because I can go on for hours about what the library can offer, but I will keep it short tonight. So if you'd like to direct your eyes to the screen over on the wall here.[1051.13][1051.13](laughter) I'm going to tell you a little bit about what the library has done in the past year. I started as the -- can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
All right. I started as the library manager of Fountain Hills Library a year ago next week, and it has been a wonderful year of learning and learning about the community and really trying to integrate the library more into the community and make sure that we're meeting your needs here in Fountain Hills. If you look at the picture up here, you can see that it was taken during our very brief snow last winter. The rabbit is looking longingly into the library because it is warm and welcoming, and we want to make sure that the library is a safe place for everyone who comes through the doors. And in connection with Domestic Violence Awareness Week, we are collecting personal hygiene items at the library to donate to women's shelters. So if you have anything that you would like to donate, you can go ahead and come into the library. We are collecting those, and we'll make sure that they get to women's shelters throughout the county to the people who need those items. So for those of you who don't know, Fountain Hills Library is part of the Maricopa County Library District, and that library district has 18 libraries around Maricopa County. You can see the map here. We're pretty far flung. A lot of the communities in Maricopa County have their own library system. So for example, you probably know that Phoenix Public Library has its own library system, Mesa Public Library, Scottsdale, Chandler, Tempe, Glendale, all have their own library systems. So they are not part of the Maricopa County library system. What the Maricopa County Library District does is it works with some of the other communities in Maricopa County who, for whatever reason, don't have the resources to provide their own library services. And so the library district works with each community and makes an agreement with each community to determine what services they need and how they can deliver those services. So Fountain Hills is fortunate to be part of a network of 18 libraries, so your card that you get here in Fountain Hills will work at any of our other libraries throughout the county. Now, I'm not going to talk about the organization too much, but I just want to give you an overview of it. Cindy Kolazinski is the library director of Maricopa County Libraries. Underneath her, she has a lot of different people, but directly supporting your Fountain Hills library, we have several people. We have Alicia Snar, who is the library operations administrator. She oversees all of the policies and the implementation of those policies in all of the libraries in the library system. Now, 18 libraries is a fairly large system to oversee, so that system is broken up into different regions, and Fountain Hills is part of the East Region. So we have an East Region manager, Danette Barton, who is really awesome and comes to Fountain Hills a lot, so if you come into the library, you probably will meet her at some point. And then I am the library manager at the Fountain Hills Library. We have 12 staff. Seven of them are full-time, five of them are part-time. So in addition to this direct line of management that you see up here on the work chart, we also have a communications team. We have a technical services team. We have collection development. We have people who are actively working to make sure that everyone in Fountain Hills gets a quality library experience. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about our resources. We have people every day who walk into the library and say, "Where are all the books?" Because we do have large spaces that are open for computer use and study tables, and people want to see the library jam-packed full of books. Well, we have 36,000 physical items in our collection, so if anyone can get through all of those in your lifetime, you're welcome to try. We have -- you can see up there, I'm not going to go through all of the numbers up there. You can take a look. But we do have books, audio books, DVDs, CDs, magazines, and we do also check out telescopes to the community. We know that being a dark-skY community is a really integral part of Fountain Hills identity, and we want to make sure that people can access things that would help enhance that part of the community and their lives. So we have those things available for checkout. Right now, right before I came over, I looked to see how many items are checked out currently. We currently have 6,544 items from our collection checked out, so it is being pretty well-used. At any point in time, we have between 18% to 25% of our items checked out, so that may be where all the books are.[1362.23][1362.23](laughter) But if you don't find the item that you want when you come into our library, you can see that in the system, we have more than 700,000 physical items. So if we don't have it here at the Fountain Hills Library, chances are you can find it in one of our other branches, and we can have it brought here for you to pick up and enjoy. And if you, you know, get the hankering to read a book or listen to music or watch a movie during hours that the library is closed, we have more than 17 million e-media items available for you to check out at any time. So if you like reading in your pajamas like I do, you don't even have to change before you go to the library and get a book. You can just download it at home and enjoy it there. So we would like the library. We are very well-used, and we're very appreciative of the beautiful library that the town has provided for us and for the community members, but we would like to have more. So you can see these people up there. Each person up there represents 500 people. So if you look, and if you were ambitious enough to count all of those out, you could see that that represents 25,000 people, which is about the population of Fountain Hills. And we have 7,000 active cardholders in our community, so that's about 28% of the community. We would love to see those yellow people increase in number and all of the gray people turn yellow, so that everyone in the community has a library card and has access to the wonderful resources that we have available for you. So each cardholder throughout the course of the year checks out about 31 items on average, so that adds up to 217,000 items that have been checked out in the past year here in Fountain Hills, and those are physical items. We know that more than that is being used. Unfortunately, we can't break out the e-resource usage by individual library, but we know that we have a lot of people here in Fountain Hills who are accessing those digital resources because we have people come in with their devices and we walk them through how to access them. And so we have a lot of resources both in the library and accessible from your website at home, from our website in your home. One of my favorite things that we do at the library is programs. So I'm just going to show you a few pictures, and I'm hoping for a certain reaction from one picture in particular, so I'm going to listen for that. But I'll just tell you a little bit about the programs we have. We do have a dedicated librarian for adults, teens, and children's programs. So we plan a variety of programs for all ages in the community. This particular one was for Band Books Week, where we made book bags, and that was for adults, and we had a great time doing that. Got a little bit messy, as we tend to do in some of our programs, and it was a lot of fun. We do summer reading every year. This year, we had 349 people participate from the community in our summer reading program, and it was based on a space theme. It was a universe of stories. So in connection with that, we did do a lot of space-related and science-related programs. So kids got to get their hands messy doing some science experiments and then also experience what it might be like to be an astronaut. This is a teen program. We have -- we really want to be a safe space for teens at the library, and we have a corner that they sit in and can study in. They have computers that are dedicated to teen use, so nobody else can use those computers. Teens can come in and do their homework or, you know, game if they want to, to kind of blow off some steam. But we do also do a lot of programs for them so that they know that the library is a place for them as well. This one was a tie-dye t-shirt program. Our teen librarian ended up with, I think, about five different colors staining his hands, and that took a couple of weeks to wear off, but it was well worth it. That's the one I was waiting for, the reaction. You disappointed a little bit. We do a lot of programs for preschoolers and early readers. This one, we have therapy horses come in. These are registered therapy mini horses that kids can read to because the horses are super gentle, super kind. They don't judge when the kids read, and also, super, super cute. So they are going to be here again next month on Tuesday. I actually missed them today, unfortunately, because I was in another meeting, and I came out and I was like, "Where are the horses?", and they were already gone. So I'm hoping to catch them next month. We do also work with the town on a lot of programs, and one that we had last week that was a great success was our Touch a Truck program that we did in cooperation with the town of Fountain Hills. So we had front loaders, fire trucks, garbage trucks, police cars. We had a truck from the sanitation department that showed a camera that goes down into the -- do they go into the manholes? They go down and check out the utilities and sewers, and that was super interesting. That was my personal favorite truck. We had about 200 people come to this event in the parking lot, and then they also came into the library to do some crafts that we had in conjunction with that. We worked with -- we worked really closely with Don Clark from the Recreation Department to make sure that this program would be a success, and we're hoping to throw it again next year. And kind of looking forward, that's what we would like to do. We want to make sure that the library is working with different organizations throughout the town to make sure that people know about the services that the library provides, but also to hear from different organizations and people in the community of what additional services and collections they would like to have here in Fountain Hills, so that we can make the resource even more relevant to your lives. We are going to be part of the Fountain at 50 Celebration. We're going -- we're planning a speaker series in cooperation with the Museum of Time -- with the Museum of Time Director, and we're also planning some other events, so make sure you keep an eye on the library in connection with the Fountain at 50 Celebration that will be happening throughout all of next year. So I just want to close and say, welcome to the Maricopa County Library District. If you don't have a card yet, we're a really short walk. You can go to the library and get one. And if you know of any group that wants to hear more about the library services, I do have a few of my business cards here. Please let me know. We'd be happy to have a librarian go out and talk about what the library can offer to you. Thank you.
Thank you.[1795.28][1795.28](applause) Any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, Councilwoman Sharnow?
Yeah, I have two quick questions, I guess. First off, I know for years, the Fountain Hills branch was, I don't know if it was on per capita basis, or per cardholder basis, but it was like first or second in the county in terms of usage and items checked out and things like that, and I don't know if you still track all that, if...
We don't, we don't track it formally, we do keep track of stats for sure. I would say right now, we're a little bit lower than that, we're not first or second anymore in terms of per capita usage of our physical items, but like I said, we don't track the usage of our digital items, and I know that that has been very popular. Our number of active cardholders has gone up year over year, even as our circulation of physical items has stayed level or gone down even a little bit. So, that tells me that people are using the card, but they might not be coming into the library necessarily to do that.
And then, secondly, I know there's a pretty large devoted group, the Library Association, that has the used bookstore there, and donates a lot of stuff back to the library, maybe you could talk about them real quickly?
Yes, thank you for bringing them up. So, we do have a Friends of the Fountain Hills Library Association, and they are indispensable in terms of providing funding for our programs. We do a lot of big performances that we bring in performers, and they provide the funding for that, and they get it largely through their book sales. So, if you come into the library, the first thing you're going to see on the right is a very small bookstore with, as you said, a dedicated staff selling the books that are donated to the Friends of the Library Group. So, they are awesome, we work with them. In fact, I was at a Friends of the Library meeting today, and that's why I miss seeing the horses, but it was totally worth it, but we do work very closely with them. They are a separate organization from the library, so a lot of people think they're one and the same, but they're a separate organization. If you donate any books at the library, they're going to go to the Friends of the Library Group, and they'll take care of all the sales. The other way that the Friends of the Library raises money to support the library services is that they do have memberships, so if you would like to be a supporting member of the Friends of the Library Group, you can, you can purchase a membership, you can do it on an annual basis, or you can also get a lifetime membership to the Friends of the Library Group. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Dave, do you have any questions? You still there?
No, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Just checking on you. I loved in your letter the way you described your, you aspire to be a vibrant community front porch, and I just think that describes exactly what you're doing, and thanks for sending that update to us, and we really appreciate you coming here and letting us know all the fun things that you're doing, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mayor, just real quickly, this is just a win-win for our community. Every property owner in Maricopa County pays tax to the library district, and we're one of those communities that's fortunate enough to actually have a branch library here. So, the way that that actually works is that we provide the building and the utilities, and they provide the book resources and library resources and the staffing, so I can't think of a better relationship and a more efficient and effective way of delivering library services than what we have here in town, so it's great.
Thank you again. So, I understand that the young Marines have arrived, and so, if you don't mind, if Mike will do the honors, I'll scoot down there, too, we already read it, so we'll, but if you don't mind, we can take a photo, that'd be great. Is that all right? Come on up, come on up. Let's go down there.
Should read again.
We read it, and we'll take a picture, and we'll present it to you, and Mike will give it to you. If you'd like to hold it, that'd be awesome. Everybody in a picture that wants to be? Thank you, thank you for coming. Thank you, thank you so much for coming. Funny, funny agenda tonight. Next, we have our call to the public. Do we have any speaker cards? These are items that are not on the agenda.
We do one from Harris Deech.
Hi, Harris, come on up.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak. This is about shootings that have been going on too much. Two killed last week in Scottsdale, two killed in Boca Raton, Florida, that's the PB of Florida, and a woman was interviewed and said, "Where's our protection with metal detectors?" That hit the nail on the head. We don't have one in here, these people are subject to being killed, we don't have one in the community center, Jenny told me that an event recently had to get away from a shooter. That's not the way to do it. We've got to prevent shooting before they occur. We need metal detectors, all like glass needs to be protected by film, which prevents, not prevents, converts regular glass to bulletproof glass. This is going on, I'm fed up with it, I'm very enthusiastic about the subject. If I offended anyone, I apologize, I'll do it again in a minute. I'm a real hard ass on that subject, and I don't feel safe in here. I felt safe in ASU, my daughter graduated there with a master's degree, they had a metal detector every single entrance. You had to hold your phone and your keys over your head to get through, and I felt very safe in there. A few years ago, I went to Disneyland, and I spoke to the security guard, and I said, "You examine the packages, but not themselves." Well, people want to go on rides. A year later, they had a metal detector in there, it took two seconds to go through it, and I felt extremely safe. I do not face, feel safe here. I challenge you people to do the right thing. I know you spent twenty thousand dollars protecting our animals, great, but not a dime to protect us. We need that metal detector in here, I will never come in this room again until Jenny tells me it's in the force. This room is not safe, a lot of places in town are not safe. The schools, I met with this principal, Kane, three times, Jenny was there once, to discuss what is being done in the schools. You got a PhD in childhood safety? Not enough. Soon, he even told me that, somebody's going up in the mountains and start blasting us with a sniper rifle. I fixed that problem in a hurry. So, I do put a helicopter in, once a week, one time. The rest of the time, we put CD plays in the bushes facing the high school and junior high school, and they'll play helicopter sounds. They don't know what's going on, they don't have to know. We need to protect us. So, I'm leaving it up to you guys to do the right thing, or I will never come back here. Maybe you don't want me to come back, I don't know. I know I love Jenny and you guys, but I'll be damned if I get shot. So, anyway, thank you for any time, and that's probably enough on that.
Thank you, Mr. Deech. Any other cards? No? Okay. Next, we have our consent agenda items. Is everybody okay with leaving everything on there? Do I have a motion?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Thank you, David. Okay, now, we're going to our regular agenda.
Mayor, if I may, just in case there might be people here for this item, I wanted to go ahead and withdraw eight D, which is the hillside protection easements. Unfortunately, the department director who spearheaded this project had a family emergency, was not able to be at the council meeting tonight, so if you don't mind, we'll go ahead and carry this, not carry it over, it'll just be brought back to a later meeting.
Then, we will go to consideration of appointments to the Board of Adjustment. I want to thank the subcommittee and the applicants, and we are, at this time, going to reappoint Nick Seaman and John Kovak III. We have another appointment that we're going to make probably in a month or so, but I don't know if you're both here, if you are, congratulations, thank you so much for reappointing and, for reapplying and, and being on our service on the Board of Adjustment, so that's all, right? Because we could only do the two? Yeah, okay. Thank you. Next is considera...
Excuse me, we'll need a motion on that.
Oh, we have to, oh, that's right, I'm sorry, yes, we need to vote on that, that's on page forty-eight. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Six to nothing, right? All right. Next is, I'm sorry, next is the purchase of one twenty-nineteen Ford truck, is that Justin? Yes, thank you.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, we come to you tonight and ask for your approval to replace our dump truck, which is currently in relatively good shape, however, it has reached its lifetime expectancy for us. Not related to that, in the last few days since the storm, we have encountered some mechanical issues with this dump truck, so the timing here could not be better in regards to us. I will certainly be happy to answer any questions you may have about the existing truck or the proposed purchase of the new one.
Thank you. Councilman?
Justin, you said relatively good shape, how do you define that?
It has a low amount of miles, because we're a small community, and it doesn't go a great distance, councilmember.
But, Justin, you didn't, in your remarks, you didn't mention how old this is, or what the year model is, isn't it fifteen years old?
This dump truck is indeed fifteen years old, that is correct.
I guess I have to wonder if it's in relatively good shape, why we're spending fifty thousand dollars now and not next year, for example.
The reason is, is councilmember magazine, is because we have a policy, and as I had mentioned at the opening statement here, we are now starting to experience some mechanical issues with this, and our policy for replacement and repair is that if the repair exceeds a certain amount based on the value of the vehicle at that time, then to replace it, even if it's not up for replacement. In this particular case, the air conditioning, the tailgate, and the bed that we're having problems with, we've not sought any quotes to have that repaired, because, again, we intended to ask for your approval to replace it. So, we are simply abiding by the replacement policy, and also, we are starting to experience some minor issues with it at this time, that in my personal opinion, would most certainly grow over time, possibly in the next year. You're welcome.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'll explain to the council that the truck is fifteen years old, I have been around it, it is in fair shape, I wouldn't say good shape right now, but it's in fair shape, and I would certainly recommend going ahead and letting the old truck go to auction and buying a new one for the town of Fountain Hills.
Thank you, is that a motion, sir? Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Justin, very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
Okay. Next, we have consideration of Resolution twenty nineteen dash fifty urging ratification of the ERA to the Constitution. Grady, or do you want me to say a few words, or do you want to?
Staff prepared this at the request of the mayor, who recognized that this item had been in the league's legislative agenda. As the staff report indicates, this item came up before the Congress back in nineteen seventy-one and seventy-two. Both the House and Senate basically recommended approval of sending this out back to the states for a constitutional convention, which basically means if the legislatures and the majority of the states, which would be thirty-eight, approve this, then it could be considered a constitutional amendment. It, right now, there are thirty-five states, excuse me, there are thirty-seven, Illinois being one of the most recent ones, and I'm trying to remember, what was?
Nevada.
Nevada was the other one prior to that time. So, in the last couple of years, we have, we're up to thirty-seven, and part of the push is if this were to be passed by Arizona, we would be known as the state that kind of pushed this issue to the forefront and hopefully get it approved. The, again, the Equal Rights Amendment is nothing more than basically granting men and women equal rights, it doesn't get into a lot of the other issues. I will tell you from this perspective, from a town manager and town issue, our current practices all adhere to equal rights, particularly in employment, we adhere that, you know, with all of our practices. Also, a lot of our service delivery, we don't differentiate or discriminate against gender or sex, and then also, past practices and policymaking that the council's made has been always on an equal basis, we would never discriminate or distinguish at that level either. So, I know the mayor had some other comments that she wanted to add as well.
Thank you. Basically, I wanted to say that, as you saw tonight, we get these requests for proclamations and for other things, asking the town, from all over the state, really, there are sixteen communities in the state of Arizona that have passed an ERA resolution so far, and of course, with the League of Arizona Cities and Towns adopting that as part of the legislative agenda, which was then approved at the Resolutions Committee and at the business meeting, that is part of their legislative agenda, and if you would allow me, I would like to ask the executive director of the league to come up and say a few words, Ken Strobeck, and then we can go on with more comments and questions, of course. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Yes, as Grady said, we did have this as a resolution at this year's Resolutions Committee at the League Annual Conference back in August. These resolutions come through our policy committees, we have five different policy committees, and any city or town can submit a policy idea for legislation, and then those ideas are discussed and reviewed by a policy committee. This one was assigned to the Neighborhood Sustainability and Quality of Life Committee, and that committee recommended that it move forward as a league resolution. League resolutions form the basis for our legislative agenda, and it was approved, not unanimously, after some discussion at the League Resolutions Committee at the League Conference in August, and so, it is actually now part of our legislative, adopted legislative agenda. And, one thing that I thought was interesting, I don't, not that this is particularly relevant, is that this was actually introduced in nineteen twenty-one, and it wasn't approved until fifty-one years later that it actually got action in the, in the Congress, so I didn't realize it had dated back that far.
Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions for Ken?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Ken, just real quickly, I know you're always being asked to look in your crystal ball, but any thoughts on the upcoming legislative session and how this looks at that?
That is a very good question, and you're right, it's always a risky business to try to guess what the legislature would do. Normally, issues of this nature tend to fall along ideological lines, you know, liberal and conservative, although I will acknowledge that there are people on other, both sides of the aisle that either support or oppose this for various reasons, and so, since it hasn't come up for a vote at the legislature, I would be reluctant to actually make a hard and fast prediction. As with anything at the legislative process, it's difficult to get any bill passed, as you know, it has to go through committees, it has to go through the House, has to go through committees on the Senate, go through the Senate floor, has to be approved by the governor, so there's lots of places along the way, going to the rules committees and so forth, where any piece of legislation can be stalled, and yet, every year, they pass, you know, twelve hundred new bills, so it can be done.
Anyway, yes. Councilman Magazine?
Hi, Ken, thanks for coming.
Sure.
You said that in the committee, it wasn't unanimous. Can you articulate what the objections were?
I think it was, as I discussed, that there are people who felt like that this was not an issue that is directly relevant to cities and towns. Normally, resolutions that we have that come before the league are things that are within our jurisdiction, things that we can actually control, but that's not always the case. In fact, there was discussion at the League Executive Committee to adopt a policy to say that resolutions could only be things that we could control, and that didn't move forward, because people said, "Well, there's a lot of things that we've advocated for that are on the federal agenda, or that have to do with infrastructure, investments, et cetera, that we're not actually spending," so that was, that was not accepted. So, basically, the league, of course, works for the cities and towns, our job is to represent you all, and so, we don't take a position other than, our position is whatever you want to do at the, at the local level for, for all the... want to do at the, at the local level for, for all the 91 cities and towns.
The, unless I'm misunderstanding, it sounds like the objections weren't philosophical in nature.
There were a few that said, "This is not necessary," or whatever. I don't remember what all the discussion was. It didn't, the discussion didn't go on very long, but later, the discussion was more about the, the scope of authority and, and where we should be spending our time.
And I think one of the things that I heard was that we don't need it. But then, if you do a lot of research or any research, then you can see that the Supreme Court in the past had said that, that it is needed, that there's no protection, no equal protections in the Constitution. And in fact, if you look at the Order of the Amendments, you have the 14th Amendment, which appears to be a protective, or at least an equal rights amendment, but then we needed the 19th Amendment to get the right to vote. So it's clear that it's not a protected, I don't even want to use the word protected, but their equal, equal rights are not guaranteed by the Constitution as it is right now. But that was one of the things that they said, "Why, why do we need it?" So if you don't have any other questions for Ken Strobeck, I will, I'm going to ask Anissa Rashida to come up because she can do a good job of kind of explaining it like I did. Thank you, Ken, so much. Anissa, thank you so much for coming.
Hello. Hi. My name's Anissa Rashida. I'm with the ERA Task Force AZ. I'm on the Board of Directors there. And so we have been running the campaign in Arizona to get the Equal Rights Amendment ratified. And there has been, the last few years, a much bigger push. And so I'm going to, it seems like some of you have been well informed. I have some materials here for you to look over, and some of them are dispelling myths and how it would benefit us and why we need it. But obviously, this is a proposed amendment for the US Constitution, and it simply states, "Equality of rights under the law shall not be denied or abridged by the United States or any state on the account of sex." That's all it says. We just want a statement of equality of the sexes in the Constitution. It was introduced in 1923 by Alice Paul, and she is quoted in saying, "There's nothing complicated about ordinary equality." The statement is just about ordinary equality of rights under the law. But yet, it has been complicated, and it's been objected many times over the years, and has had a lot of roadblocks because it would benefit women. But it does say on the account of sex. It doesn't say women. It is, it would protect us all. It would create a strict scrutiny and judicial review for sex discrimination cases like race, religion, and national origin. So it would raise that bar for judicial review for sex discrimination cases, and we would be able to win more of those cases in courts. We've created intermediate scrutiny based on some of those cases in the 70s and 80s, but it's still not quite enough. So I would say that, like we said, we need one more state to go. It would be amazing to have Arizona make that history-making moment to become the last state needed for ratification. We are so close, but yet, Arizona Legislature has held it up for decades. They've never had a vote on ratification. And we are asking you, and many of the other cities, as well as the League, to add your voices to show Arizona legislators that there are enough of their constituents that care about this so that they'll actually see it through. I was told by Meznard, J.D. Meznard, when he was the Speaker of the House, that if he could see enough voices, he would probably be willing to see it through, that it would take a threshold for him because he didn't see it as necessary. And I would say to those who don't think we need it, that our rights have come by patchwork. It's, we've got the right to vote in this Constitution. All the other rights women enjoy now and that I've enjoyed is piecemeal, one by one, year by year. You know, when we had the right to vote, we didn't have rights to our children in divorce cases. And it's, October is Domestic Violence Month Awareness. Domestic violence was not even a word. Marital rape was not illegal. One by one, we've gotten here, but they're all by acts and statutes that are not as permanent as a constitutional guarantee. So this amendment would guarantee these, the prerogative we've made is permanent, and we wouldn't take steps back. This year, the Violence Against Women Act was not reauthorized or funded. So this is an example of how we could take a step back. Some of these rights we're privileged to enjoy are not permanent. They have to be reauthorized, and that's one that wasn't. So I would say that the antiquated arguments that have been made against the Equal Rights Amendment and trying to complicate it no longer hold up against scrutiny. It used to be, I've heard in the past, that it would allow gay marriage, or that women would fight in combat, or we're all going to have to share the same bathroom. And that just sounds ridiculous in 2019, especially to the younger generation. They are surprised that it's not there. So if you guys want to ask questions, I can say that, but I'm just here to just urge your city to stand with the other cities and show the Arizona legislature that, that we want to benefit your city, our state, and everyone in the United States would benefit from this amendment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman?
Thank you. I think it's a disgrace that women, on average, make something like 25% less than men for similar jobs. Would this affect that?
Yes. So there are cases about the pay gap. It's been a slow, slow progress closing this gap, and especially for women of color. You know, I think Latino women making the 50s, a little more than 50% to the dollar for the same work. There are, right now, U of A has a lawsuit on pay discrimination, and there is a legal argument that if we, that, that judicial review would help sex discrimination cases, including pay discrimination based on sex.
Thank you. Any other questions? I wanted to mention, because Ken was talking about the legislature, is that Michelle Eugente Rita, the senator from our district, did introduce this bill last year. It didn't get a hearing, so I understand she's supportive of, of that.
She, yes, she created her own bill. So there was a Republican bill and a Democratic bill in the Senate. They were introduced separately, and neither one got a hearing. But yes, I've heard her speak. She supports the Equal Rights Amendment, but she never got it to a hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah. So if you guys want this material, I can hand it to the town clerk, and you guys can look over it. But thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you so much. Do we have other speaker cards?
No speaker cards, but I have five cards from those that support adoption of the resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from anybody? No? Okay. It's on page 51. Can I, oops, I'm sorry. No, it's not. Can I get a motion, please?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mayor, since you brought this forward, I'm going to assume that you're making the motion to approve, and I'll second it.
Well, thank you. I will move to approve Resolution 2019-50. Are you seconding it? Okay, any other discussion? All is in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes six to zero.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. I appreciate you coming tonight. So the next item we are not going to do, right, for sure. And then after that, we have our council discussion direction to town manager. We heard one speaker tonight talk about safety, and we will continue that discussion. Is there anything else that you'd like to? Councilman?
I haven't looked ahead at, I know we have weeks ahead on future agenda items, but maybe an update on Four Peaks Park and how that's going over there with the playground and stuff?
You bet. We'll bring back an item on this.
I'm glad that you mentioned that, because just so you all know, that, you know, we have the coming agendas that we keep track of. And so when there's things that you want to make sure that is on that list, make sure you let us know, because there's a lot going on. Any motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. No, it's not 1:00 in the morning.